Just making sure, uh, there's something you have to read. Mikey, do you have what he has to read?
Hold on, we'll get it right now.
Okay.
Do you have anything? You need more? I only need one copy.
This is just a reminder.
I'll let you say it. You can say it, that way we'll have it. He's gonna say something, you can call the meeting to order and then he's gonna say something.
Call the Boonville City Council Meeting to Order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, mission, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Just a reminder that this is being live streamed on our YouTube channel, available for coding purposes. Um, you creating in this meeting is your consent to be recorded as retention per the Board of Accounts requirements.
Jim Miller?
Here.
Mike Webb?
Here.
Sherry Severs?
Here.
Um, let the record show that Chad, oh, Sean Russell?
Guys here.
Okay, sorry, um, let the record show that Sean Russell is present via Boon. And Chad Pryor, um, is absent besides Mayor Wyatt and, oops.
We have a case of in this minutes.
Motion due from Council meeting in five, six, twenty-five.
I second that.
All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Mayor's update? Aye. Zach? Date? Sorry. So moving on to citizens' concerns, looks like, uh, Jean Carter, would you like to speak? State your name and address, please.
Hi everyone, Jean Carter, nine eight eight, no address, and I'm here, this is in Boon County. And I've been front of you, uh, this year's, um, also that I would like you to get a chance to read over. I know it's kind of impossible now, but just as in previous year, coming before you, um, this year, the total reduction for the deaths of deaths is eighteen or so evidently. These programs are definitely work, I certainly appreciate your participation in helping me to do that. I have is that the unrestricted funding is probably more appropriate for not for, not that, a non-profit organization, um, but it's possible to purchase office supplies and other necessary items at my discretion. And you can read on here some of the things that I want to do is extend ill-burned tract into 2026. Um, then, um, or, and then, um, there are, there are many on here to speak about for, um, but right now, there seems to be a lock on the two, I said I'd hope to get at fair time, but there's a battle over this and so I can't get in on those right now, but I hope to, um. The one big event I have this year is the Walk for Lives and I in front of the Parks Board earlier, um, what they are teaming up with United Against Fentanyl as a nation walk all simultaneous same time from East Coast coast. And then for all of us to not only bring awareness to the community about fentanyl and other illicit drugs, but also to honor those that have been lost or those that are fighting and to help end this war. That is so pertinent now. Um, exact fundraiser to kind of, uh, be between three to four thousand, simply bigger deal. And we're gonna have lawyers and media and hopefully, uh, government officials and city, county government officials present, um, to speak if they choose and let the know that, you know, you're in support of what we're doing. Um, another thing that I like to do is show gizmo right here, this is VOX. And it's a new VOX with a company that I have ran across. And unlike VOXes, um, it's quite small and only hold a couple of doses. This one I have, um, like two doses in here, probably hold three, avoid four in my other VOXs. It also has a CPR mask and sanitary wipe, which is kind of good. Um, guys can see it. It's really awesome in the fact that, um, when you pull the screen, it starts giving-
First off, let's give these breaths. Step number one is to check to see if somebody really is unresponsive. You can do that by gently shaking and shouting, or you can use your-
So questions on how to use Narcan? And I would really like to see that, like in city hall, in the square, businesses, um, restaurants, gas stations, um, because they can't make these for the outdoors. Now, I can get these, just a screen panel as well, for a hundred dollars each that I can in. Some of my VOXes, like the four I have here in protected weather, but those screens themselves, weatherproof. Uh, they have to be mounted inside. So that's another big thing that I would like to do and get going this-
Jean, I got a question about that.
Absolutely.
How long video lasts?
Um, just under a minute.
Okay. Yeah. I, I could just foresee a video taking longer than was necessary to be able to administer the Narcan and I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and the Narcan always has instructions with it on how to use, but I do think a lot of people just jump in, do the best they can do in an emergency situation. Um, a lot of people don't know how they should run over on their side, so, and they become ill, you know, that they didn't, um, order weight, the two, three member, you gave them another dose. And a lot of them don't know that they can fall back into overdose, um, thirty minutes after Narcan's on them. So there's, you know, a lot of learning to do and, um, I know I've been trying to do a lot of trains in the area with a mannequin and answer questions. Um, yard signs, of course, we yard signs for the event as well as I periodically just put signs out as a reminder. Um, so one of my missions is people don't know that Narcan's on the side of the building, so I would like to put, like, some type of a, they make like a V, uh, shape to mount to the wall that says, or an emergency box or, so I bring attention, uh, to those that there's a box there. I also could be printing new banners. Um, best one we, you helped me print last year was the one of the babies and the toddlers. That's been a real attention get, you know, getter badly, but, um, you know, it's just not individuals who use that stuff. It's the, the users' families, from fentanyl, um, to, uh, you know, actual members, that small, the babies and stuff that get affected as well and lose their lives. Um, so I may need one or two more banners printed, uh, that just goes as how the day goes and where my events pop up, I'd like to offer. Uh, my biggest thing is, I, I've got a small one up now that I'm chuckle, chuckle, very good. Um, like to have somebody be able to design website for me and keep it up and running and one that I could get in on, that I could make changements around, that's the things that are coming up with new drugs in the area, like hyalazine and all the benzos that are going around. Um, and I have tests to use to test those things. Um, so I, I've had, I've worked with GoDaddy for years, I've had my business, my body boutique business years ago. But it kind of looks like in looking through the GoDaddy site, the cost would be about eight hundred dollars. Because I don't need to be fancy, just something that looks there that I'm doing more professional. I desperately need a, a, a small desktop computer and a new printer. I got ready to enter eight and I saved money getting some off-the-market cartridges and my printer picked up on that right now, so now I've gotta go back out and spend more on that to get, you know, I thought, you know, forty dollars right compared to a hundred and twenty dollar ones, but I guess either a hundred and twenty.
Can I ask something there? I have one printer.
Hewlett Packard?
So they have a program that you can pay pages to print.
Oh, Jim, it, it varies on, you know, what I'm doing with this event. It can be, uh, few, let's just say, I would give an, an average number of about eighty.
Okay, so you do that all on your printer?
Yeah, um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh-
There's a couple of things I want, what we can do in the meeting, but there's a couple of things I want to talk to you about.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Might save you some money.
Yeah, great, yeah, and I know the program that you're speaking about where they just automatically-
Yeah, and it's cheaper than eight hundred a year, not if you're doing eighty pages a month.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it might be cheaper than, even if eighty pages a month, I still think it's cheaper and plus they tend to, whenever you need it.
And if, and I would go, I would still go with Hewlett Packard if I got a new-
That, that's what I, I'm kind of old school and spoiled those, so.
Um, so I would like to offer for the Police Department is pouches that will hold doses of Narcan for their vests if they would choose to. Right now, it's my understanding that they have first aid kits in their vehicle, um, so when they respond, somebody is unresponsive, have to run back to their car to get their first kit in order to administer the Narcan and that's precious moment. You know, but they can die in under thirty seconds, uh, you know, or up to a minute or two, you know, so, no. So to have that availability of that would be, in my opinion. Uh, I also have ran across these fentanyl strips and, um, these are really unique in that you don't pollute the drug, you simply could just run them across the surface and they will detect the fentanyl. And there are availabilities for, um, different types of drugs, powder or liquid form, but not would it protect them checking what they're dealing with, but, you know, can also be used after the fact. You know, they've got somebody in custody or something to double check. Do you guys have those tests? Okay.
If there's any question?
Yeah, that would be useful, if I could talk them into changing-
They would have their policy.
Yeah.
And I don't, I, I don't think that any of us would, if we think something, if they're on it, testing it, um, is far greater than us finding out it's fentanyl, whether we can send it to a lab and control it.
Well, I just have to say, when they found my grandson and it was, uh, uh, of course, a B P officer that came into his apartment with my husband, um, nothing was tested. The only way we found out what was in his system was, uh, toxicology. So there needs to be some improvement in that, some have got a long road ahead, laws to be changed and some things to, um, so, a little bit with everything I've got, I'm roughly asking for about twenty thousand, give or take, because this increase nowadays ship absolutely rigorous and I try to, to do the denying thing, tax exempt as I can. Um, so, um, I do always try to participate in Black Balloon Day, Empty Chair, National Fentanyl Awareness Day. I try to set up at all the, um, uh, events that I get in fight of or asked to attend. Some of them always appropriate for us to be there, um, but I would attend all of them if I could. And I'm also proud to announce that we work along Warwick County's with that, and with Impact Ministries and Youth First, and the Warwick County School Corporation, and then, of course, uh, as the city making changes in our community. Um, down the road, Hope wanted to offer, um, meetings and recovery rooms and a sober living home. That was our long-term dream and then what came in, that kind of, that process, that just absolutely won't. And, um, I've been talking to people that do counseling, more child counseling because of Sterling and it'll sort, even now into the fourth and fifth grade. And I, in April, had, uh, eight, uh, member, eight individuals under the age of fourteen that were in the emergency room for overdoses. And that's pretty scary when you have to think about it. Um, biggest experience, or they fall to peer pressure, or biggest of mine is to get this guy's share again and, and speak. And then, of course, I want to say thank you to all of you that do, that have supported me in what we do in honor of my grandson and the kindness that you've shown to my family. And just know that I'm out there fighting lives and you guys are right beside me and, and I appreciate it. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
I appreciate, you know, where these dollars are going and thanks for finding, like, new ways of that, of fighting, fighting. I get that.
Jean, you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Was, was that your down each hander with the pencil head?
Yes.
Wow. I mean, you see on the tip of a pencil, the amount fit on, that is an equal dose.
And now the big board down has, uh, the, the pencil and, um, it'll have a hand on it. Kids are so scared, going to be arrested and, of course, they can't be under Aaron's law. Um, but it's plainly states, call nine-one-one and don't run.
Yeah.
You know, because these guys, when they get somebody there to tell them, like, what that individual has taken and they need to learn that they're not going, go to jail for trying to save somebody. There might be other reason, but can't go to jail for trying to save a life. So I was told at this school, the teachers, as subbing this year, that a student had asked them, uh, if that billboard's true with the pencil, uh, this one or the one in Chandler, whichever one. And the, uh, teacher said, I happen to know the woman who does that and I know that it would be true, put it up there. And that was fun, you know, because a lot of times they're just trying to overdo things and get them to understand. Uh, they also call it cookie effect, where all of us could break, it's a chocolate chip cookie and some of us get more chips in it than others and that's why maybe only one in this room would die. It's about the one with the fentanyl. So, you know, there's just, there's a lot, yeah, I know, to educate them on that and just don't do it. Don't titillate off of somebody, period. So. Yeah. Yes. So I would assume that you guys will need to meet on that and probably-
We can't get about Sean here, make sure he doesn't have any questions.
Yeah, Sean, you have anything for me?
Sean, do you have any questions for Jean?
Thank you.
And Tammy, the unrestricted's?
Sure, um, this is our settlement for this year, but, um, unrestricted is forty-one thousand, eight oh twenty-six. And that is after we did, um, we had given, um, you first money, that's the balance left, yeah.
Will you receive this year?
I don't remember, I had to find it before I came up here.
And you will be, you're receiving that for approximately in sixteen years.
Yeah, yeah.
How many, and they're suing different pharmaceutical companies and pharmacies all the time.
Yeah, um, she is with, it's a shelter, this one too.
It's the Warwick County-
Angela Maglinor?
Oh, yes, she's not with them.
They're opening up a long transitional recovery program for single mothers and their children, right here in Boonville.
And so is Impact Minister, at Warwick County Recovers, they're opening up a sober house for sick women. So, it's, it's getting out there.
It is.
I don't mean to glow, kind of, take the credit for a lot, you know, for my grandson to learn to do that, but, um, I just keep honoring him and every fight with every, so.
Jean's asking for half of our balance plus the one to receive.
Or if you could do a fifty-fifty out of each fund, whatever's best for you.
I would say now, out of the restricted, there's twenty-two thousand, twenty-two thousand, two thirty-five, that's repaid the D out of, was the restricted.
So, it goes in cycle, right? Maybe every, at certain time, we get a certain amount of money.
Right, yes, and I was trying to find, I can't remember, it already coming up.
That's not the issue, what I'm saying is, um, if we go on a cycle, maybe we ought to start looking at some sort of a deadline to, for requests, something like that. But that way, also when Jean comes to us, we know that the deadline is Friday, nobody else, and then that way we can give her as soon as possible, uh, opposed to saying, give all of it or most of it to next two people and then somebody comes in with a great idea and a hundred bucks. So I'm trying to throw that for the future and maybe-
Have you seen all of the laws on how that money can be spent?
Well, have I seen them? No.
Okay.
I, I think I, I also have a time, you know, once the-
Yeah, and I could get that if you would like it, because it's, it can only be used in certain ways.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, like, it's so much money there per year and if we give away at the beginning of the cycle, then it comes in with another great program.
Yeah, you know, that's, um, I think about twenty each time and, uh, you know, I think kind of fair for anybody that, and if they needed more and you had more left, they could come back at a date and, and reapply.
Well, I, I think what really helps Jean too is, is, you know, his dad had ribbon and you're coming back with some dad says we have reduced the number of deaths by each time.
Yeah.
You start doing stuff like that and, and that speaks volumes when you come and request the next time, because the first time you don't know, but then the second time you do and more, more come through and the more likely are your, your share or more.
Yeah, last year we had one thousand four hundred and fifty taken from the Narcan boxes and the deaths there. And that is up from five hundred and seventy-eight in twenty-three and then that nine seventy-eight is up from, uh, the five hundred ninety-seven in twenty-twenty-two, first started.
Jean?
Sean's one.
Yes.
Did you, there was a thousand and thirty-four of them you handed out?
Hand it out. Fortunately, I don't know how many are used, I mean, I do have some people let me know, um, but for them, I don't. Um, I know there was an individual who used doses on her son, she went home, fucking found him in the floor and she saw Jimmy the next time, she had demon, had demon was crying, her saving, to save her son's life. Um, and then I know there was an eighty-six year old who, um, didn't know whether she took her medication or not, so she was second time, and her sixteen-year-old granddaughter had to have some in her possession and called nine-one-one, administered and saved her grand life. So it's just not for users. And if you don't, uh, if it's not an opioid, Narcan's not gonna surprise people. I shove it up my nose, but when I'm talking to them, I've had a couple of times because it tastes so nasty. Um, that's probably what happens, the taste of, of medicine, but it can't hurt and it only works if you are on opioids.
You don't need on the side.
So, real question, I think, for that, you know, explanation, how many accidental encounters experiencing in our area?
Accidental what?
Encounters.
Encounters, whether it be fentanyl or, you know, something, just something of that magnitude of people that have no intentions of doing anything, anything related to fentanyl, coming into contact with it.
And I would say, I really don't know, Sean, the, there's not been a good record-keeping in deaths. There's not really been good, um, deaths recorded with, about film, um, because it's been so new and actually it started like headwinding and it just gets bigger. Um, but I would say percentage is quite high in accidental. There are some that keep looking for that higher escalation good, so they will even request that fentanyl be a thing. And it's trusting whoever they get it from. That's, you're playing Russian roulette every time.
And I have a last question on these, the increase in, in these three years that you gave us, do you think the increases are more due to just the education that it's out there opposed to? Because the flip side of that is, you know, people from using drugs for that. You don't want the increase in, that's what I want, maybe so it's just because of the people that are there and that's why they're getting, as opposed to the increase in drug use.
And you can look at that both ways, however, uh, my grandson had two doses length away from him and they cannot give it to him, so it's no way that it actually increases these drugs. It's being at the right place, right time with it to save somebody.
I understand that, yeah, I, yeah, I was trying to think of a good way to ask that question.
Yeah, so, um, I know a lot of times, I've not heard any stories on Warwick County or, you know, any of our city Police Department, like guys behind me, but, uh, ended up having been pulled over. And if someone just see Narcan in their floorboard or in their cup holder, they want to pull them out of the cars in search of vehicles because they assume there are drugs in there and that's, I'm just big, everybody just to keep, I have this in my purse, you know, and I carry to refill the boxes so there's doses out there, you know, and I do fentanyl test kits, hyalazine test and I'm getting benzo test kits, you know, that law has been approved, they were able to dose out in order for this or drug. There's a lot of harm reduction you can do that I'm opposed to, like clean needle exchange. I can't do that yet. I can't, somebody who shoots drugs is clean needle to save them, so they can get HIV or any hepatitis, you know, any illnesses. It's a good program and it's working fabulous in Philadelphia and Chicago and the larger cities. I don't think that Boonville's ready for that program yet. And then there are safe use houses, where we all sit in here together and everybody gets high but one in order to be able to administer Narcan. And again, I, I understand the, the visa for that, but that's not helping with the problem. It's really not. So there's, we got a lot of things we can do, a lot we can do. I think a lot of it will depend on being able to actually get in the schools and, and talk with them. I, I got sixteen, I got a Narcan VOX for each school, the school nurses have it. I load a dose in each emergency kit for each, uh, and nobody else in there. But if it's needed, in there with the Band-Aids or the whatever, you know, in the emergency, as we able to go into the schools and just, you know, Jim, if he's got a headache, well, here's a Tylenol and I just get it out of my purse or out of my pocket and maybe I think it's safe. I think I'm safe place, but nobody knows anymore. And it's literally playing roulette, you try to experiment any drug from a source that's, you don't know.
One thing I will say, um, just that she has the money every year. Some people are, you know, they'll get it and just had on it. I mean, she definitely puts it back into the community, you see out at almost every craft show, function, anything like that, definitely seen. So I definitely think that it's a good cause to support her in that.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion?
Would like to make a motion, uh, give Jean twenty thousand, nine four dollars and thirteen cents, which is one half of that, her total's here, she's asking for twenty thousand, but it comes to twenty-two thousand, seventy dollars. Very active in our community, she, um, because of Jean and what she's done, saving a lot of lives out there. So half of what we have, and that was an eight oh eight, twenty-six. I'm saying we, uh, make, I made a motion to give Jean twenty thousand, oh, four thirteen, one half, surgical expenses for twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, and people, they can come and ask, but there's also programs through the county. County's got money too and they can ask from them, so. In fact, the county is implementing next year, where you apply as a type thing and they'll have, they'll have it on how much you can get, they'll have a cap.
And I'd say if I go to the county and ask for money, only purchasing things, I use side of Boonville City Limits. I have separate accounts, I operate trays and, you know, last year you asked, I provided receipts and I did for everything. Um, restricted, I don't think I have to do that, but it's easier if I decide that I need cartridges that I can run and get in cartridges that I don't have, ask permission for it, due to its restricted. Thank you.
All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it and carries?
Thank you, you guys are awesome and my family, thanks you all. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Roll call, vote.
Sean, can you hear us?
Give me it, Sean. Mute it, Sean.
Sorry, I can do stuff, but I can barely hear most things that are being said. I can hear Jean pretty good, but there at the table, hear anything?
We have a motion by, for twenty thousand, nine hundred dollars and fourteen cents, which is for our unrestricted balance, and we have a second by Jim, and we vote with three ayes. We're muted, so we're gonna do a roll to include your vote.
Thank you.
Jim Miller? Sherry Severs?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Mike Webb? That motion passes for the row.
Thank you.
Council concerns, Sean, we'll start with you. Counsel concerned, Sean, we'll start with you.
The only concern I've got, a lot of people read Mills Avenue. I'm not, I know that we're looking at getting Metzger out there or, or maybe it was, maybe our car it was out there to get a quote and stuff, but that road has completely fallen apart and I've had some regarding.
Sean, I did talk to Sarah about that and I know that that is on her radar. But probably in the community crossings thing, it's probably going to have to be local funds that we have. So I think she's been working on that.
Okay, and, and I'll, one of my part in that, I would have never thought that that road, six months ago, eight months ago, that road looked now.
Gets a lot of traffic.
Go ahead and get the please. Yep.
Counsel.
That was all I had, Mike.
Counselwoman Severs?
Thank you.
And that for me. We have a business and then after that, when we get to new business, we'll slide you guys up to the top of it. So old business, a second reading for speed limitations on American Way. That's twenty twenty-five dash three. You want to read that?
I'll just wait till they.
All right.
I make a motion, second reading of ordinance, is it twenty twenty-five dash?
Three.
Three.
Name and title only?
Name and title only, sorry.
Second that.
All in favor, respond with aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three, an ordinance establishing a summit on American Way and Libby Boulevard and providing a per violation thereof.
Make a move.
Section?
All in favor, respond with aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Ayes have it.
Will go into effect thirty days after having a paper because there is a penalty involved. So it'll go in probably next Thursday's paper and then thirty days after that, so.
Perfect. So it'll be good for when the school year starts in.
That moves us on to new business. We'll get to the proposal from the police on contract adjustments. Member of state chairman address, please.
Benjamin Embry, one twenty-one East Locust Street for the Boonville Police Department Board. So last time we weren't able to talk to you guys, but we did give you a list of the items that we were going to be asking for. Does anyone have any questions on the items on that list?
I did not. I did not have any questions.
I know there are a couple of ones from last year that we're, we had some issues last year. We're hoping that added to the contract here. Another paper that we gave you guys today was the salary. So on here, what we did, we used the Indiana Gateway site that shows public employment station through with departments, more size and the surrounding area. And we went on the highest paid employee or of the same rank. We went off that and we added them on average, highest paid, just regular, lowest police officer PD was seventy-four thousand two hundred and four. Last year I was the highest paid at Boonville and I worked a lot of overtime for those that I believe I've made a little over sixty cent. So we're still, I got about seven thousands than most other departments are in the area, off average. Thing with the sergeants were, were a little bit less, but the, with the sergeants, I don't know about others. I know ours, our sergeants do work overtime. A lot of other places don't, so close. Lieutenant, I mean, I, I can't remember pay was. Do you guys remember what it was for lieutenant? Yeah, I know we're, we're way less on lieutenant than most other places. Yeah, our lieutenant seven, the average is eighty-one thousand. So we definitely would like to try to, try to bump that up a little bit to where that's, that's of twenty twenty-four. So we're trying to negotiate for twenty twenty-six as you guys know, we can, so we can try numbers for two years past these numbers. It makes sense for, since we're looking twenty-four numbers, we're trying to negotiate for twenty-six.
So I have the numbers that are on, this is what I'm talking about. Okay, so the numbers that are on here, does that include their overtime too?
That's, yeah, that includes their overtime and, and all of that.
Longevity.
I believe it's, it's their highest.
But that's everything that they get.
That's everything that they get. So it's, it's the same with me as well.
I guess what I'm saying is, is that to me, person is not everything they got paid. It's what their base salary is. Maybe I'm wrong.
Now, because then you've got to figure Ben, their longevity, top of that. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying that if, if these numbers include at these other police departments overtime and, and things that, that our police officers, that they don't or vice versa.
Right.
Okay, then I'm not that the comparison, I don't want to say fair, it's comparison because I know what you're trying to compare. You're trying to compare, you know, our highest paid officer, everything included to their highest paid officer, everything included. And I'd like to start at base. What their base is, your base, and then, you know, longevity and, because that's what we tried to adjust last year a little bit, so.
Yeah, we, we increased longevity last.
Can I speak on that real quick?
Nate's your name?
Justice Goken, one twenty-one East Locust Street at the Boonville Police Department. If we went that route and were playing, or not playing, but we were using analogy of he's got everything included in his and there's just base, that would make his pay.
I want to compare our base to the base.
Okay, so I'm saying we're comparing him with everything and there's.
I wanted apples to apples and I'm not sure we are on this chart.
Just remove the variation of overtime might work and they might work or not work.
Do you guys want us to try to get the, their, their base, basic?
Well, there's, there's two things we know, I think all departments have, they have longevity, right? And they have.
Not all, no. And Chandler just got overtime for the first time this year.
Okay, so, but still, if we look at base salary, it sounds to me like maybe you guys have some things. So to, to me, starting base salary is, is the thing I want to, where we are. As you said, we're talking twenty twenties negotiation, which is getting close to the time. If something changes in the next year, we're going to lose money, all money at the city, so.
Are you, do they tell you how much we're going to win lit money?
Pucky the lit. We, we had the lit tax until, I'm sorry. Seth Kite, one twenty-one East Locust, Boonville Police Department. We, we had the public safety lit tax until.
Twenty twenty-eight.
It did.
Even with that, I thought it didn't go into effect by twenty, it'd be December of twenty-seven.
It's budget year twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-seven, but you still have, I mean, if you're, if you're up here in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven and then all of a sudden your money, I mean, we're going to lose almost four million dollars between lit and public safety. So what you were getting in regular public safety lit is going to go down to most, it'll be almost a million dollars split between the two departments.
So instead of getting a million, she'll get five hundred. So you're going to have in public safety for your department.
But that, that includes, I mean, that's paying, already paying for, I think, two or three others that they wanted higher extra plus the long B plus. Now, granted, with that mange, you know, we're hoping that there's legislation will realize how it's going. But part of the, the problem is, and, and like I said, we're paged with um ball, or I'm sorry, bits analysis for us. And that's the one that came back and said, as of right now, that's what you will be, Boonville will be losing. But the lit money is based, will be based on inside city limits of those that work that are lit by city, and that's where the lit, now the county that gets the lit. So, yeah, so I mean, it's just, it's kind of scary actually, but.
God, I don't know. It's difficult to compare apples to apples because every department is a little bit different in pay and everything. But I think if you start with base, we can see where you, where you can go to the base and, and we can do our own research too. We can look that up on Gateway just as well. And, and that's what we, we did, you know, in the last, last bug when we did those because, I mean, we had to get all that spreadsheet too and, and all that. When we come back and do this, I want to give everything I, but I just, I'm scared now that, that we're going to put ourselves in a bind. You know, obviously this is just for us to look at right now. He didn't want to make any decisions today on it.
And this, I mean, this year we've ever really started meeting guys, so.
Yes.
It's a lottery card for us still.
Yeah.
To figure out what we need to get.
No, I think like, like Tammy said, Paige is going to come back with some hopefully revised numbers to, we know that yet, but we have numbers to the positive. But we got it also kind of as an independent, I was at the same thing, telling the same stuff. He's been telling us that for actually a couple of years because we were, we were doing that when we bumped you guys last year. We asked Ben, we said, can we sustain this? That, that's, that's what we have to worry about. Can we sustain pay? You know, we can afford it right now, but can we sustain it? And he said, at the time, it was the public safety lit tax stayed, was we could sustain this. But it, they just said that to now, so.
Yeah, I had it was going to go as, as much as it was.
But that's if that passes.
No, it has passed.
I thought that they were working on making amendments.
Oh, if, if they can, it's if they can come back, change it, yeah.
That was over in April.
No, they passed it. It's, it's.
That's why as soon as they understood and baked and telling them, started working on the numbers for the cities that they do.
Got you, got you.
We start news.
So we, I mean, just for a comparison, we got almost a million, well over six million dollars for lit. That's public safety, regular lit, which takes care of a lot of, there's a bond payment that comes out. There's payments that we've already signed up that. And the number that it was like, I'm just going to say six point five and that goes down to like two point five.
Yeah, it was, I think I talked about it.
I mean, it was like tears.
And the only option Mr. gave us was to raise your taxes.
We have to raise taxes.
We would have to raise taxes.
Yeah, but, but we can't raise your tax and we, and that's our lit tax, that's the maximum we can get.
We can't raise, it's not property taxes we could be raising. We'd be raising income taxes and things like that.
Yeah, but the tax is the income tax and that's, we're, that's going to the highest that we can go. Right now. Yeah, right now we're, the cities can get, I think it's two point, two point nine percent. We're at two percent maybe. Anyway, yeah, that's, that's, that's the maximum that we can raise and take and still present that much money.
Yeah, it's, it really is. I, and I want, as a city council, as I'm sure, I think Jim and I, constant miles to say, we want you guys to make as much as you possibly can. We want you to stay in Bill. We love our fire, we love police. We're going to have to find ways to do, but I can tell you from a county level, they're leaning at cutting just in the county. That was about all of this. And then the state level is, it's forced local government, city, county to back us. But you have to say, we've gone six million and that includes just local income, lit, lit income, but public safety, local income. We go from six million to point.
Two point five total. That's all.
That's everything. And I mean, that's twenty percent community crossing money comes from. We're not even getting community crossings next year to pick our roads within our city. So it's going to, every town, every city, every county, out of nine counties in the state of Indiana, so we hit ninety-one. One is exempt and we can't figure.
So the other thing that two local. The, the towns. The township, the townships that have able to give nice raises and stuff, they're also probably going to be hurting. So, you know, it's, it's a trickle down. It's unfortunately, it's going to affect everybody. So, yeah, we're, that doesn't mean that we can't try to find these two. You know.
I would like to say, don't let this misinformation deter the commission and you guys.
We'll still be here asking you guys. You know that.
And I'm going to work with you to achieve the very most that we can.
Yeah, and you, you guys have been awesome about that and we appreciate that. I guess, you know, after these numbers, so you guys want us to look up the, try to figure out the base?
Base.
Base salary of all these.
For, for, for base for? Everything you're providing.
I would do, I would do, and I would just do base for petroleum.
Yeah, and the additional, because the additional stuff that we put on would be then longevity and stuff like that. See where you compare base wise, because as Mike said, you know, when you start to get into like some guys like to work a lot, some guys don't. And so that can affect, that can affect these numbers, you know, who's their highest paid. Well, it was actually decided. I know there's a couple of firemen that'll jump on overtime.
My brother was paid city employee this year.
Yeah, and that, so they jump on any overtime. They understand that they have a rotation they go through, but guys say no, then the next guy and all of a sudden it's him again and he says yes.
And one thing too to even think about, that the benefits is for health insurance. You know, we pay nothing except for fifty-two dollars a month, fifty-four for our health insurance. And that's, that's a twenty-two thousand dollar a year. That's what the city pays for that.
And I know other, I know all the other cities pay it too, but a lot of people have to pay maybe two or three hundred dollars a month out of their paycheck insurance. Because, and that's still a great, compared to what it costs. That's, so we weigh and consider when we decide, you know, we have to, you know, what your take home is, weigh and consider all those other things that we're handling on top of it too. Because our insurance is.
Well, so aside from salary, the, the other list of items, what, what are you guys' initials on this? What are you, what do you like? And then, and then also, I guess, as I was telling Jim, but on that, you guys, last time I did, after I get, get forward, I guess you're right. I thought, I was, but is, what do you guys like? You guys dislike? What would you guys like? Just write out as we would in the contract, would you guys like?
I understand. I understand. When you say associate system, mental thousands, not per year.
No, it's.
That's right. Say it one to your variant or one to four years, experience bachelor.
Is that a one time?
Each year, each year.
Add it to your salary.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought it meant. I just wanted to clarify that, so.
Hey, Ben? Hey, so like for example, I'm, I'm there now, or like the education or military district for years, a thousand dollars. Any associate's degree or that?
It's any, any associate's degree and the, I believe it's, it's associated, the word is military.
Okay.
Let me ask you this. You have an associate's degree and then you can perform.
No, you have two degrees and definitely you just get the highest. You would just get the highest of the two. Eight years of school to get yours degree or is it six years?
Masters, five, yeah. It should be four years for a bachelor, additional year for master things. Or it can be less.
What would be every month? Wouldn't we have to come back and maybe a month or two or plan as far as the best, so that maybe we can have our budgets on some of these.
I mean, I'll, we'll leave that up to you guys. When you guys loan us back, we could, I mean, we get this, as quick as we can, as quick can you guys have plenty of time for the budget in December? Get the, to make it you guys.
Hundred percent agree and we could set up as long as two, like sit down and kind of hand thing we could back, you know. That's kind of the way you could, we could, don't have to wait a month to be able to do that. We could sit there and, and discuss as long, and they'd open door laws, then we can just, you know, this is, you know, I can put to Sherry, she can sit there and talk about it. And then Mike and I could talk about it, Mike and Sherry, you know, we just, that way we can have, maybe when we come to decision making meeting here.
Was that a moment I heard for?
If that's what you want to do, I mean, I'm willing to, but before.
I, I would, it's just kind of hard once and then us try to figure out.
And it's only for last year, you know, that's what I'm doing is I'm willing, I'm going to meet every couple of weeks, whatever. And if it comes down, if you want to meet every more than one, you know, inside what we need to meet. So I'm going to call that a motion for an exploratory between Ben and two members of something. That's my motion.
Unless we have two nominees appointing a second layer. Or Sean, would you like to be appointed to that or Sherry?
Sherry was on the last.
What, was that Sherry?
Point out Sherry on the last.
Oh, she was being on it. Sherry, Sherry won the last one and Sherry wants to pay? I fully support.
I think we're saying, I'd say if one is your turn, I think.
I will gladly.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so you're going to get, sorry, number guys.
Do my own research.
So on the table.
I second.
All in.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Talking about last year about us, like show where that money's going, I don't know who you get that from. Hey, me, cool. I figured.
I said nobody said anything to it, so, yeah.
It was talking to you at night. I'm new here.
And what I'm going to do, when I, when I do my research, going to back off of these police departments, who they all are, Sheriff's Office, Chandler, Jasper, Honeyberg, Mount.
Here just because I'm in person here to check for them.
I, John.
Okay, it is an even, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Needed this form.
No, that's, Michelle, thank the.
All right.
Okay, tax agents, they're not here, so don't do that.
Guys have one for us today. We are moving through the, since they are not present. And appointment for economic help, make key smith. Guess we need to have a motion to make that.
I, I made a motion to you.
Second. Jim, Sean?
Let me.
Second.
All in favor, respond with aye.
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 All opposed? Have it. That moves us to see revised web services sales agreement. And Zach?
Or Jim.
Or Jim.
So, I, contract is up with them. Uh, it's a five year contract. So I think, just make it clear, the 29 annual payment, and this is five year contract, so 2,905 over the contract. This include a, uh, bill, uh, not a complete read it last time, but, um, we touched on it, and Heather and I are working on that right now. Uh, buys, I mean, all the guys needed to really, and this is gonna be a six to nine month process. Okay, our website's not gonna be down or anything. But just give us the new contract and then they will lay timeline with I in terms of, uh, make changes. We're looking at these ones and see what we like, what we dislike about them. Things as simple as changing its color scheme just to make it pop out of the paper. Uh, bottom line is, that's the contract. Are some other things? Zach is, look, look, that would cost more, but they'll, at this time, so.
That's five years, or 14, five? 2,900 a year?
Yes. Yes. We redesigned the website in five. So if we want to cancel this anytime we wanted to, we, but at the end of the year, we did another redesign if we need to. And that's kind of one of their wheels, which is why we went with the first one, it's gonna be a lot cheaper since we are, they were already doing our website. So, so take your question this.
Any questions or discussion? Nine. For revised.
Motion.
Sales agreement, $29 per contract. I'm has a motion.
I'll say that.
Second. Respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
I would like to let the council know that, um, we're in the stage of the codification, um, with, um, illegal. We keep going back on a couple that they're wanting chain open to get all that ready and have that freezing. And then I believe that once we do that, we'll be to put those on codification.
Yeah, revised, and once, we're gonna put that extra for the digital side, um, to make, make the link base structure and put it on to the revised website. And it'll look just like our website, but it'll type it there. But it'll be.
So like you pull all of our ordinance thing up?
The ones in codification.
Okay.
Zach, I'd like to do a discussion about that. And we can't go all the way back to 1800 and whatever, import notices, but, uh, yeah. The, and as, and I'm sure if some pops up, that, that's not there, that we can do the research, pull, get it on there.
Codification is, you know, you look for certain, they have like, or things like that, that also redact, they have 19, 20, and is amended or replaces that. So you're not going back ordinance or whatever.
I, I know, I think Bloomington used the same one, if you were to Bloomington, say ordinances, and when you click on it, and then like he takes you out to the cloud and goes with all, but.
Yeah, physical words.
Yeah.
We, we.
Yeah. But, you know, even time, codification, it would cost a lot of money. Not even that. Supporting that is the hardest part of codification. Look, and look, and look. Well, that's cause you get this one going, I got a lot of time. But, I mean, the questions they ask are, it's tons of stuff to refund, so.
Appreciate all your hard work on this. Thank you.
Motion to approve and transfer 2025.
We do that every, two or three times a year. Uh, once we have to, um, transfer accounts. And so this is not up in our, it's just, uh, moving around. Some of the, the biggest one is lit, the regular lit, because of the SAD's gonna be coming out of that. We don't change that payroll account. So that's the, um, like I said, it's just moving the trend is around.
Do we need to prove it?
First reading, just one reading.
Okay. So I make a motion to read Resolution 25 dash five.
Second that.
I'll respond with aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
25 dash five, a resolution to appropriations in certain categories of the 20 budget.
Motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt.
I'll just get Sean to tie the way in.
We have a motion to adopt. And I said, all in favor, aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. 25 dash five ordinance not used with the resolution, which is, an ordinance creating new vision for the operation of recreational off-road vehicles within the city of Boonville.
The change on this, um, is, under Shen, said we be O2 policies. Uh, we change that so it's, um, that work for the city, have the off guard. And if they don't have, as long as they have a state and they're of age, um, have the police, they, so that's, that's what we have. That was the only thing they made.
I mentioned for first reading of ordinance 25 dash five, and name and title.
Second. All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinance 25 dash five, an ordinance me 21 dash 10, 813, 2014 dash nine is amended on June the 3rd, 2025. An ordinance create for the operation, recreational off-road vehicles within the city of Boonville.
Make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2025.
Second.
I'll respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have it.
And I think, and I think can't.
Is there a fine there?
Yeah. Not in this part, but the other parts, I'll wait until.
Wait till next month.
Yeah.
Yep.
Moving on to business D, amended records 2025.
Okay, so at a lot of the salary ordinance, because of the, uh, few people in the quail that not gets a raise, had, uh, taking them retroactive back to June. So I did call state board of accounts and, and said, that was fine, as long as we put on here that it was reactive to January 1 of 25.
And we had first reading, so this is.
No, it's that one. So now you, and a new number, 2025 dash six, you can just.
Okay. So we need two readings?
Yeah, two readings. It's a spin. Yeah. All this, so we can now go back and pay them.
I didn't think we could suspend salary.
No, can't.
Shianne, if you're two.
Um, I'll make the motion to, cause we need the first read for this one, correct?
Correct.
I'll make the motion first reading. You said it was 2025 dash.
Correct.
I second that.
You respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, motion carries.
Ordinance dash six, amended 635, retroactive to 1125. The salary ordinance 2025 six, amending salary ordinance 28 and 2025 dash two, appointed officials and employees of the Boonville 25, be it ordained by the council of the city of Boon.
Make a motion for first reading of 2025 dash six.
Second that. All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Make a motion to suspend the rule.
We have a motion to suspend the rule. Second, all in favor, aye. All opposed? Ayes have it.
Second reading.
Make a motion for second reading, ordinance dash six. Same and only.
And a second from Russ. Chris Mike?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinance 2025 dash six, amended 63 of 25, active to 1125. All right, ordinance 25 dash six, amending 2024 dash eight and 2025 dash two, as an employees of the city of Boonville for 25, be it ordained by the county of Boonville, Indiana.
Motion to, go ahead, go ahead Sean.
Okay, I was gonna ask, we just motion to adopt, correct?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you. Where?